Call the meeting to order, roll call.
Councilmember Mersch?
Here.
Hold on, let's turn off that. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wilson is absent. Councilmember Black, Mayor Pro Tem Derringer.
Here.
Mayor Piper.
Stand for the pledge allegiance.
Okay, sure. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No presentations, approval of the agenda order?
Go ahead. Second.
All right, we have no, all in favor? Okay. Blue folder items, we have none. All right, public comment on anything that is not on the agenda.
Hi, I'm Carrie Lee at One Acacia Lane, and you know, right next door here. I just, I just have to say, I'm just so confused how, as a resident, all the residents in this community, in this city, have rights, and the city is there to protect those rights, whether it's the view, the trees, all of it, the property, and somehow, we have no rights. We made that crystal clear, no rights. You've started this project without a survey. It's just an amazing thing that everybody on this hill has rights, but we appear to have no rights. That's all I have to say about it. I'm just mystified, dumbfounded, and hurt beyond belief because I love this community. We have served this community until COVID and two cancers. We offered up our, anyway, I'm just devastated, and no rights. I can't believe it. How is that possible?
Thank you.
I'm the other half of who you just met, Tom Lee, One Acacia Lane. I don't know where even to begin. The project of the tennis courts has never been about the tennis courts. It's been about, basically, integrity. It's been about the ability to trust people. It's been about, you know, in our case, our privacy, and nobody in this council or in the homeowners association, they've smiled, they've, "Yes, sir, Mr. Lee, blah, 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 blah." But it's all been, you know, it's strong words, but it's a pack of lies. I was, and let me go back several years, and I don't know exactly when it was, but the botanical gardens were tearing down some greenhouses, and Carrie befriended the foreman over there, and he gave us all of the glass and the structures and so forth, whatever we wanted, so that Carrie could build a greenhouse. We put the structure up, 12 feet square, exactly in the same spot where you people have come onto our property, and we had a city event, and I don't remember whether it was the pancake breakfast, or whether it was the barbecue, or what it was, but one of the ladies that served on one of the boards, committees, whatever, here, comes to Carrie and tells Carrie, "You know, you can't build in the side yard setback, and we'll have to make you tear it down." So Carrie and I had a discussion about it, and we tore it down. And I took all the stuff and put it in my truck, and I took it to work, and I put it in the dumpster, and that was the end of it. You've had all these hearings, you've been going on with this cabana with the tennis courts for, what, 10, 12 years, whatever it's been? It's gone through the different, I don't know what it is, who comes and goes, but it's gone through the different planning. The original architect, Tony, gave me a set of plans, and he says, "Tom, this is wrong, and you should know about it because it impacts you." And I looked at the plans, and I said, "Yeah," I said, "they're building in the side yard setback, and they're doing things that they shouldn't be doing." He says, "Well," he says, "it's a job for me, and I just thought you needed to know." There were several meetings, I testified here, I went into the homeowners association, I did everything that I should have done as a concerned citizen, or a neighbor, or whatever. And I pointed out that the only thing that we were concerned about was that you were building on the property line, and the only thing we were concerned about was our own privacy, because if you did that, what would happen would be that the shrubs and the hedges that were next to the property, on both our property and the city's property, that the hedges were our buffer between the tennis courts and our property. And we've lived here for, what, 24 years now, never had a punch-up with anybody, tried to be good citizens, and all of a sudden, one day, a tractor shows up and starts digging. And you dug into our property, you tore all of our, not all of them, but everything on the east side of our fence, you tore all the shrubbery down, all the bushes, all the trees, everything. So now what we have, the building, when you build this, the cabana, and I realize it's a cabana, on one side you have a wall, and on the other side you have it open, but our side is a wall. So now, instead of shrubs and so forth, we're looking at that wall, and it looks just like that. And you dug onto our property. I went to the homeowners association, I showed them a survey that showed clearly that our fence was anywheres from a foot to two and a half feet off of the property line, and that the fence zigzagged, and that it started out on property line down at PV Drive and ended up north of where our kitchen is. And that back when that fence was put in was at the same time, as close as I can tell, was at the same time that the tennis courts and the, we call it a carriage house, which was quite a, for those who were at that meeting, was kind of interesting, but at any rate, it used to be a barn, and the city, and that was the only ring on the hill in Rolling Hills at the time. It was built, it was built by the owner, the owner of the property at the time, that owned the property where the tennis courts are and our property, had separated the property and had given the property to the neighbors to build a ring so that their kids could have horses and ride and so forth. And the barn was built where it was built because at the south or the north end of our property, it used to be a diatomaceous earth mine, and so it was not developed, it was, you know, hillian, whatever, whatever. And so the city took that corner of the property, and there's a curve there, it's about 50 square feet or whatever it is, but they took the corner off of the property so that you could bring the horses from the barn down to the ring. And so the fence has a whoop-de-doo in it, which didn't matter to anybody. The side yard offsets don't matter, but when you want to build on property line, the property line and the side yard offsets matter, and the city cannot do that. Your attorney has told you that you have the right to do anything that you want. Well, that's not true. So I went to Mr. Horvath, and I asked him, "Did you read what he told you was okay?" He said, "No, went to the city manager." Nobody had ever read this. You took the word from the attorney for it, but it's very specific about what it says. It says you have to have a hearing, and there has to be a necessity. "I don't care that you build in the side yard setback, but don't tell me that you can take and put a retaining wall on property line within an inch and a half of my property." And that's what I was told. And so nobody's ever read that, nobody's ever comprehended what it said and what the parameters were, and you guys just moved ahead. You moved ahead without a survey. You had Bolton supposedly give you a survey. He never set foot on the property, never gave you a certification. You called in another surveyor, and he came, and he surveyed the property exactly the way it should be, and exactly the way the survey that I have that goes back into the 1990s and before. And it clearly shows that you're on our property. I went to the foreman after I had a meeting with the city manager, Mr. Horvath, and Kristen from the homeowners association, and they said that they had gotten a new survey, and that it clearly showed that it was not being, that the construction was not being in violation of our property rights. Now, to talk about property rights, to digress just a second, when you have a survey, and when you buy a piece of property, and when you have property lines, and you have side yard setbacks, I have a vested right in the setbacks on any piece of property, the same way that my neighbor has a right to my side yard setbacks. And that does not exclude the city. And the 1700, which is what your attorney has given you, is the avenue that you're supposed to take to violate that, but none of you people have ever read it. And it gives you the path that you have to go through, which was never done. And it says specifically that you must justify the intent, the purpose, and prove that the purpose is essential, and have a discussion about it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It was never done. There was a discussion about the cabana, there was a discussion about the organization of taking and upgrading the tennis courts, and we, and the, and the, our neighbors, we support all that. Nobody's ever been against that. We just ask for one thing, don't violate our privacy. Now we have, basically, depending on how you look at it, somewhere around a 75-foot, 100-foot hole, looking right into our backyard, and you can look at it right off of Rolling Hills Road or PV Drive, not PV Drive, but Portuguese Pen Road. The foreman, when originally this started, I went to the foreman in the morning and introduced myself, I was nice to him, I told him that there was a problem, I told him that he has to back away from this until we get it resolved. He got lippy with me, he told me that he had emails, and he had this, and he had that, and he had authorization, and I'm the foreman, and who are you? And I said, "Okay, fine." After my meeting with Mr. Horvath and the city manager the other day, I went over, and I looked at the property, and there's the line, and it clearly shows that you dug two feet onto our property. You've underdug the fence posts, you've taken out all the vegetation. The next morning, I went over, and I talked to the foreman again, brief, backed away from it. Then I went over, and if you go over right now, the foreman went back in, redug against the property line, dug more out. He told me, and this is the stuff that just, you know, I don't get it. I mean, he assumed that I knew nothing about building, he assumed that I knew nothing about surveying, he assumed that I was, I don't know what. I had enough somehow to come up here on the hill and afford my house, so I'm not some bozo. I mean, I've built buildings, I've designed buildings, that's not my trade, I'm not an engineer, I flunked out of engineering, actually, and I went back and got a degree in finance, which was remarkable because there you are. And he's telling me that he's going to take and pour the foundation for your retaining wall, and he started out, and there was a lady from the city here that was with him, and he started out, and he told me he could pour the wall within two inches of the property line. And then he backs down, he said, "No," he says, "I can pour it within an inch and a half of the property line." So he's going to pour 100 and some odd feet of concrete within an inch and a half of the property line, and I guess he's not going to have a form, because where are you going to put your form? When the board is an inch and a half thick, and you need posts to hold it up. So what did he do? Nothing. So what did he do now? If you go over there right now, the string that shows the property line has been moved. There's the stick that says property line, there's no string to it, the green string is gone, what's there now is a pink line that is about six or eight inches further towards our property. What did he also do? He dug all the trenches for the foundation for the cabana. So for him to go back in and dig that, the dirt out, to move the retaining wall further east where it belongs, he's got to drive his tractor over these two- or three-foot deep trenches that are already there for the foundations. So basically, what's happened is, the community development department, the city council, and the contractor have told us to you. I don't get it. I don't understand. What I need from you tonight is why? All you had to do was move everything east enough so that we would maintain our hedges, so that we would maintain our property. That's all we asked, nothing else. We didn't protest anything else. That's all we asked. And in taking those hedges down, our neighbors directly to the west of us, you've opened up, their whole, their master bedroom looks out over our ring and the trees and all the rest of it, and because you've taken the trees out on where the guardhouse is and in that area, and all of the bushes on our side, all of the lights, including the lights between city hall here and the homeowners association, all of that stuff, all the Amazon trucks, and all the motorhomes, and all the cement trucks, and everything else, it's like they're living on the 405 freeway. Why? What was necessary for you people to give up your common sense and your integrity for an inch of dirt? What was the purpose of that? I don't understand. It doesn't cross my radar. Are we going to sue? No. I mean, I just got out of, you know, four years of, you know, chemo and so forth. You want to see what hair looks like when it grows out? After you lose it all, that's what it looks like. And, you know, tomorrow I go in for my third checkup and scan, and if I pass that, they're going to turn me loose into society. So what you're looking at now, if they turn me loose, you don't want to know what I'm going to look like. But it's just, you need to know, and it's got to be on the, it's got to be documented, what's taken place here. And I don't know why you people did that. Nobody can explain to me. Maybe our attorney here can explain to me why it's so essential to have a bar and a big screen TV and a side yard setback in Merling Hills. I mean, maybe he can do that. I don't know if any one of you want to tackle that job. I certainly wouldn't, but that's what's going on. And, you know, I would have thought that through the years, the only one that's been, you know, that Kristen at the homeowners association has been very courteous to us in keeping us posted, but we've gotten nothing from the city, from anybody, in the last couple of years. And like I say, all of a sudden, a tractor, they drop a roll-off off next to the guardhouse, and I'm driving to work, and I'm going, "What's that about?" And then the tractors show up, and then the rest of it starts. And nobody said, "Hang on a second, maybe we ought to take another look." Everybody just kind of shined us on, and the disrespect for that is unforgivable. And, you know, what you can do about it now, I don't know, but it just seems to me that if you, you know, Kristen has promised that they're going to plant vegetation, and they're going to put it back, and so forth and so on. Well, that's kind of interesting, because how do you do that? How do you plant bushes into cement? How does that work? I'm not sure how that, you know, be pulled off. Lot of interesting stuff that people say they can do, but have no way of doing it. I'm done. You know, it's not, I know that it's not open for debate, I know that it's not, I know that you're going to take and eulogize a survey in the receive and file, a survey of the property to document it, but what you're documenting is exactly what you did. And as far as pictures are concerned, I mean, we have pictures of everything. If you want to walk out there, you can take a look at it. It's inexcusable to do what's taken place, it's inexcusable. You sit here and you talk about, you know, the rules and the regulations, and how you want to do this, and you got to do that, and blah, 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 and yet in this very room, for some reason or another, you did just the opposite. And, you know, it's caused a lot of grief on our side of the fence, and there's just no reason for it. It was unnecessary. So, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Judith?
Judith Hayne, 31 Eastfield. So I know Tom and Carrie weren't necessarily expecting me to talk, but I just wanted to say something on their behalf because they've been incredible residents for this community, opening their home for neighborhood meetings and for other events, and the system, sometimes it's very frustrating how the city council and the association works. In association, you could have a little bit of back-and-forth dialogue, here you have to just say your piece and hope that something happens. So I don't know whether you guys can do a site visit, how you can plan or somehow explain to them how you can rectify this? Can you do a site visit? I mean, they said that they've spoken to some of the staff here, but is there some way tonight that you can say to them that something will move forward, other than you just, as you said, just reading and filing it? Because it's not fair to them. I mean, I know the tennis court came to association meeting, a lot of people showed up in protests about losing their tennis court, like they wanted at least one court to be able to play on. There's lots of other tennis courts here, luckily they found places to go play in the meantime and stuff, but the fact that they, these guys got overlooked, and that this is happening to their property is totally unfair. So I know I can't even really ask, I'm just saying, hopefully you can put it on the agenda so there can be further conversation before it moves forward to the point where there's no return. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we're going to close the pub comment. All right, consent calendar?
I would move the consent calendar. I did have one question on the bills, the ACH 987 check, just the water bill, it is honestly shocking to me. How could you have $3,000 water bill in one month, plus another $4.33? I know, I know they've gone through the roof, but that's shocking.
Would they be using a lot of water?
For the construction? They didn't even work last week.
Construction be using our water? No, they have to get, they got a separate permit to...
Going to those fire hydrants?
Right, and they're using the fire hydrant up...
I just, I mean, $4.87, $2.87, plus another $4.33, that's over $3,000 in one month. That's a lot. I just want to know if something, did we have a broken pipe? Were we open watering? What's going on?
You know, I was here late on Thursday night and noticed a sprinkler, you know, was broken. Bennett is on a weekly basis supposed to double-check sprinklers, and that one had clearly put a lot of water out onto the parking lot. I'm going to...
8:27 to 9:25.
So we have had multiple repairs throughout the year to broken sprinklers, which basically will do the same. I think one night we came out of a meeting, and there was a geyser coming out of one. Yeah, so we, as soon as staff notices that, we send text messages to Bennett's supervisor to let them know that we've noticed it, but they are supposed to be keeping tabs on the weekly basis when they come.
Endless water.
Yeah, and otherwise, we're technically, we are, to your point, which is valid, we're supposed to be using less water because the plantings don't require as much water.
Other uglies can be.
Right. So, and then the only other thing for us to do would be to look at the meter, talk to Cal Water, and see if there's a leak somewhere.
So no, we don't really know.
Yes.
All right, then I'd move the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to commission item, zoning case number 25-033, site plan review for construction of a new 19-foot stable, non-exempt grading, expansion of a building pad wall to exceed three feet height, not to exceed maximum five feet of height, and other improvements, conditional use permit for the stable to exceed 200 square feet, variance to exceed 40% disturbance, and one Hackamore, and it's exempt from CEQA.
Thanks, Mayor. Please, the council.
There goes.
I think you just said it all, but this was at planning commi, this was at the planning commission last month, and last month was its third visit to the planning commission. It was redesigned twice before this. The project location is in the RS1 zone, you'll see it under the red star on the map. Here's an aerial photo, it's on the east side of Hackamore at the corner of Eastfield Drive, so it is a constrained lot, one being on the corner, and then it also goes down to the end of the cul-de-sac, which is where the property owner would like to put the proposed stable. The cul-de-sac cuts into the property, so those are two constraints against the lot. Again, just to elaborate on the background, RS1, the net lot acre is 1.08 acres, which is about 47,000 square feet. It was developed with a 2,700-square-foot home in 1949, a three-car garage, 660 feet, square feet. It has a swimming pool in the back, as you saw in the aerial, and outdoor kitchen amenities, and it has a corral area in the back that the property owner now wishes to transform into a stable. As I stated before, this went to the planning commission in July, there were some view concerns from the neighbors across the street at Six Hackamore. The property owners in back of me worked with the, worked with the property owner to move the stable and reduce the size. And then some final tweaks and adjustments, including reducing the building pad, happened in August, and then in September 16th, the planning commission approved the property, the project. The project is, you'll see here is the summary of the requests for the last three months and the approvals that happened. The original height was 20 feet, the owners took it down to 19 feet. They originally had 604 square feet of, or cubic yards of grading, they needed in order to push the building pad down to bring the grading up to 1,400 cubic yards. The retaining walls remain the same, about three-to-five-foot average, so that's okay per site plan review requirements. And then the building pad had to expand up to 3,000 square feet to allow the movement of the, of the stable into the back of the property and into the rear side yard setback. The property, or the stable, has always required a conditional use permit. It's 1,859 square feet, over 200 square feet, accessory structure requires a CUP, and originally it was about 2,000 square feet. The variance has always been in place as well, 40%, because this is a constrained lot, and the house is somewhat large already, they needed a variance for the disturbance to exceed 40%. With the house, it's already at 50%, with the, with the proposed... With the, um, with the proposed stable, it goes up to about 70%. Here's a summary of the changes. Excuse me, I haven't talked in a while. Uh, July, um, was the first planning commission meeting. We went out to the field, on the field trip. It was 2,000 square foot proposed. And, um, came back August 19th. The property owner already knew when they had this, when they put the polls up, that there was going to be some view constraints for six Hackamore across the street. So they worked with the property owner across the street and the neighbors. And they, they took the square footage down and it remained the same to the September 16 meeting. The building pad, there was, they wanted to utilize the existing pad, but because there were some view issues, um, they had to lower it two feet in the first round of corrections. And then, um, in the second minor corrections, they lowered it two more feet, which is why we see a little bit more, um, cubic yardage of grading happening. The footprint, uh, of the stable also moved back on the property, um, towards the back, nine feet. And then it also moved 15 feet back in the final rendition. So total of 24 movement back towards the house, if you will, south. It went down a foot, stayed the same. And the, like I said earlier, the cubic, um, the grading went up to accommodate the pad lowering of four feet. And they didn't have to use, they, they had, um, stable access that was off of Hackamore, which we thought in the beginning would need to widen and be shifted down, but in, in the, um, in the eventual end, it didn't. And then finally, because it moved and it got smaller, it wasn't, it was in the 30-yard front setback, but, um, it actually moved out of that setback area. And it moved into the rear setback, which is an allowance. You can go, um, up to 25 feet in the rear setback. So those are highlights of the changes. You'll see on this, um, this is, this is the, the site plan. The full site plan is the dash line. And this is the 50-foot front setback. The original, uh, the original stable was here. It got pushed back. The original footprint was in black, if you can see the black, and it got shrunk down from 2,000 to about 1,800. The rear setback line is here, so basically it got pushed back into the rear setback. And yet it doesn't, um, extend into the bridle trail. So it got shrunk and it pushed down and moved back and moved actually up towards the house. That's the 15-foot you saw earlier. Um, this isn't up close, um, magnified, if you will. The previous is in red. This was the, um, original proposed that caused a potential view impact, or that did cause view impacts and how they shrunk it down. And it is a two-story with a loft. This is, uh, in the front elevation, uh, to match the house. And this is a footprint of the property, one, two, three horse stalls, and then the loft with, um, storage, um, tack room up, up top. The project is exempt from CEQA, and therefore we recommend city council receive and file. Thank you.
I have a question. If, if they need to widen their DG path for access to the barn, do they need to come back since it's just DG? Because that looks awful narrow access for hay and stuff. And that's the only way to get to the barn. If they need to widen, we don't have to approve that since it's just DG, hopefully?
Uh, correct. They don't need to
Because it doesn't look very wide, right? It doesn't look wide enough to get a truck down.
You're right. If, if they do need to widen it, it will go through the traffic commission potentially?
But we don't have to re-vote?
No.
Good.
Okay. So, um, I thank you for outlining the, the concerns by the neighboring residents. But after all the changes were made, did all the residents that had expressed concerns withdraw all those concerns with the project? Yes or no? Or there's still concerns?
There were no concerns. They actually, and maybe the owner would like to speak to this, they actually worked with the owner to move it back and push it 15 feet back. And the owner was very amenable to do what they did. And at the August planning commission, the commission directed them to work with property, the neighbor, neighboring property owner, which they did, and, um, and came to an agreement. So what you see before you tonight is the agreement to build it like that.
Okay. Okay. It would be good to, after addressing the concerns, just to say, you know, that there, after the changes were made, appeared that those addressed all the concerns, just so that
Yes.
I don't have to follow up with those questions. Um, and then, um, I don't know, was there an expression made by, I think this is the first time I've seen a stable with two bathrooms, because it's a small structure. Uh, was there any reason why there's two bathrooms in it?
I don't care. We don't have anything to do with the inside of it anyway.
It doesn't matter for us.
We don't know anything about the inside of structures. They could have 10 bathrooms and it's not up to us.
Okay. Well, and then the other thing, I, I mentioned this last time, but in this table that we have, if you could please put in what we, um, used to have with, um, the, the maximums, 20% for structural lot, the 15% for flat work, and the 35% for the building pad. Um, because I, I found it in the report, but it's just nice to have it all laid out in the, in the chart.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. We're good? Then we're good. So I'm going to open for a public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we're going to close public comment. Someone wants to make a motion?
I'd make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Perfect. Hey, thank you. We know it's a hassle to work with your neighbors. We really appreciate that. Thank you very much. I'm not sure where we're ended up either way, but thank you.
They're all our friends. We're all friends.
Okay.
We appreciate that.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Okay. All right, then have a good evening. Public hearing, none. Discussion, none. Matters from city council. Thank you very much.
I, I think that after all the discussion today earlier on, I do think that we should have a, um, we should move the fences to the actual property lines. I think we need to be accurate on property lines. So I think that part of the, the tennis court thing is the property line should be, um, respected and all property fences should be moved to the property lines.
And, and I agree. I don't know, I think there's still, still some discussion about where the
I don't think there is.
Where there are. I think we should at least have a site.
Why? You got a, you got a, you got a, how accurate within? Is it within an inch or two from GPS?
The survey, when they stake it, yes, there, it's always within a certain fractional amount.
Sure, is it even better than that?
Yeah, I, I think he's got it, uh, he, he put in the footings, uh, to, to my knowledge, and we'll have to wait till we get his final report, but, um, pretty, pretty much on spot.
So the, I, I just want to, so the property lines are within an inch or two from
About two inches from, right, their fence is on, is on their property.
So we need to, we need to respect the property lines and all fences should be on the property lines.
And, and I, I agree with that completely. I have to admit, Jim, I, without seeing it, I mean, we're getting conflicting story, stories, not, not stories, but different viewpoints. Without my seeing it, I mean, we're, we're being responsible for this. We, the council wasn't really involved in this.
I've been on it since, I've been on it since day one.
Counsel, I just, I just want to remind us that this, this is not on the agenda. So we have to, we can't get into a discussion.
Respect the property. They want us to respect their property lines. They would have insisted upon it. I think we should respect the property and put all fencing right on the property line. Okay.
Yes. Okay.
What can we do at this point?
Have they put rebar in? Or they're just trenches?
The rebar's going in, uh, this week, I believe.
No, no, I understand.
We're not over on their property.
Yes. We just got to make sure it's correct.
You want it done again?
No.
You want another survey or do it again?
No. Just as long as we're right. Because we didn't draw this thing, they drew that.
But we've now got a survey.
Yep. Okay.
We paid for it.
Which matches the
Well, but if you
Previous survey.
And if they're talk, talking about vegetation that can't be planted, what, because there's a wall there now that's had a big impact, um, I mean, I just feel like I, I'm not, I don't really understand this. I think we should, we should
You're allowed, they're allowed to plant trees on their side of the property any day they want.
I, I underst
Okay. Hang on, we're going to give Papa John an ulcer.
Yeah. You're too young to have an ulcer.
All right.
Okay, so we're still on council matters?
Yeah. Yep.
I'd have to make a motion that, can we direct it to be put on an, on the, on agenda so that it can be discussed, so we can have a discussion, so we can hear from the city attorney?
Yeah, we can do that, but in two weeks from now, rebar's going to be in the ground.
Right. I want that thing done.
Staff will be returning with the survey for, uh, the official survey for you to receive and file as soon as we have it.
We thought we would have it by this meeting, but it's not prepared yet. My final
So it's going to be, when it's, when we have the right information, it's going to be put on the agenda?
But if the stuff's already done?
As long as we know it's in the right spot, so what?
If it's in the wrong spot, we
They get it?
Yep.
Correct. And plans were altered, uh, to ensure that there was no footings, uh, encroaching on the property.
Can I, without violating anything, can someone from the city staff walk with me over there to take a look at it?
Absolutely.
If any of my fellow council members have a problem with my doing that?
Of course you can.
Okay, I'll, I'll arrange to do that.
Okay. Great.
Okay, so, um, we have an idea on that topic, because that's good.
No, go ahead.
I had a question on council matters because it came up during, uh, council member Black's question about the water bill. So if there is a, um, in fact, a sprinkler that's broken is stealing, um, water, is there any fix to stop the, the surge of water? I mean, do we shut off the water in the meantime till they get there or how?
Sprinklers go off typically overnight. Uh, so like I said, the only reason I noticed it was because I was here till close to 10 on Thursday. Uh, with that said, there's, if I see something in the morning or staff sees an area that is, we can tell that something happened overnight, then we report it right away to Bennett, so it could be addressed. But aside from that, uh, there's, I can ask Bennett if there's a way to have an automatic shut off, uh, or something to that effect, if, if there's too much water going through. I don't know. I would assume in this day and age that there's smart controls to be able to measure water. I have no idea, but I would ask.
RACIO has all these kinds of things that you can have. You've got valve monitoring, you've got all these kinds of things that can, they just, they bing you in the middle of the night when there's something
I have an agenda item.
Something wrong. Is Bennett responsive?
Hang on, so this is what we're going to do. We're going to put the sprinkler, whatever.
Oh, I'm saying you skipped. We have 13A on their matters of council. I figure you guys didn't.
Completely lost control. Completely lost control.
Like, okay.
Okay. So, um,
Every council member is to allow to bring up anything they want, anytime they want.
No, I know. We
So this is a 13A, that means nothing. Every one of us can bring up something.
And you said, I just wanted to bring it to the mayor's attention.
Then the other thing is, is, um, I did send this, because I got an email from Jackie Backruck of the COG and reminded me about an item that all the city members have to vote on. It's, it's something that the, the board approved, um, but if we could put it on the agenda for the next time, basically to, it just allows the LA city to bring a city, um, staff, high-level fast staff member, because, uh, otherwise they have no representation there. And it's like, it's a no-brainer, but we need to each approve it because we're all member cities. That's it.
Okay.
If you can forward that to myself, we'll agenda it.
I did, yeah, send you and Karina.
It came in, Jackie sent it not too long ago. Late afternoon for us. We got it.
You guys all good?
Yep.
13A.
Awesome. I just want to make sure we didn't forget that one. Okay. So, um, at the last city council meeting, um, Councilwoman Mersch had requested that the item be brought up before you this evening, which is to have a discussion on something related to the purpose, content, and opportunities for enhancement of the city's blue newsletter. The city's, uh, blue newsletter has been printed for a little over 20 years. And it provides information to the community that is upcoming, currently ongoing, and, any events that will be coming before you from the committee, from the community. Recently, the city has also been expanding, um, the last couple of years or several years, sharing information to recent legislation such as Senate Bill 1383, which requires the city to be compliant with Cal Recycles mandates. Part of what we do there is educate the residents, which allows us to meet that mandate. Uh, we're covered in that component. Uh, we also provide information on republic services and any special events, such as this past weekend's e-waste and shredding event and/or communal events. Uh, we also, um, share any information such as, uh, reporting of crimes within our community as, and recently, the city, uh, staff have been exploring on adding information related to the fire department. As you understand, the power state's created a lot of attention on what's going on in the community. So we've been trying to get different methods in which we can report out just fires that are current, have occurred or, um, in the past or currently within the city, within this quarter. So, but, so this evening, staff is seeking any, um, information from the city council on what you would like to see different added amended amendments or suggestions. And, um, that concludes my presentation.
I, I asked for this specifically about, um, the, first of all, I love the blue newsletter. I think it's great. I'm certainly not advocating that we get rid of it or stop putting things in it. My issue was strictly on the crime statistic reporting and then the new, uh, information that was put in there regarding, um, the first responder calls. I don't think that there's a value in us regurgitating and re-providing information that's available via other pub, other public, um, channels. The sheriff's department produces the crime statistics. The first responders have their information. I would suggest that a better way to handle this is we educate our customer, our customers, old line thinking, sorry, our residents, that it's going to be coming away from the newsletter, you know, maybe make it effective in January, and putting links on the city's website where they can go directly to the sources that produce this. Because we get the calls here when, why wasn't this reported? This should have been reported. This, this shouldn't have been reported. And we're not in, we're not in control of it. I think the residents should be directed to the people that produce it. We make it easy for them. We can give them a link, and I know they need to be educated that it won't be there. But I just don't see any reason why we would duplicate it. And we shouldn't be the gatekeepers. We're being perceived as being gatekeepers of the information that's being put out there. And we're not. We're just regurgitating what's given to us. And I just think it'd be much more efficient to do it that way. And then there's, that would free up a little bit of space in the blue newsletter to be used for things that continue to be germane to our community specifically. And it frees up staff to do other things. And I think it keeps us, if, if there's a crime, let's say we have burglaries, like when we had a spate of burglaries, we can still put that in the blue newsletter about things that you can do to prevent crime and things like that. We can still educate our, our residents. I'm not saying that we back out of that, but just this rote reporting of information, to me, it's just a duplication and a waste of time.
You know me, when I hear the word website or link, the answer's no. And patient, the residents love the blue newsletter. They like the crime statistics. And I would never vote for that. I remember you, what I wanted on the blues newsletter, I don't remember, it was two or three managers ago. I wanted to have the, um, I wanted to have people's, uh, garage sales and stuff for sale. And it was a Tony, I guess, that we're not allowed to do that. But I thought it'd be great because people want to sell stuff and nobody knows they got it for sale. And then people come into the city, whereas you'd have residents who would buy it. would buy it, but Tony said we couldn't do it. And he said, put it on some website, which of course no one ever sees.
How many calls did you get about the crime?
The murders?
Yeah.
I got multiple people asking about the murders.
Yeah.
So that's fine. How many times have we had murders? So if I get multiple people asking every 20 years, I'm okay with that. Once every 20 years, I can, I can deal with that.
I don't mind people asking me about it. I can handle that all, all day long.
Right.
What I have a problem with is us being perceived as being gatekeepers of what's reported. They were very upset that it wasn't reported. And we're not, I don't like being perceived...
The newspaper came out a while after the murders. It'd already been in the paper. It'd been, it was the first we could have possibly reported it.
Right.
And by the way, when the time comes out for the crime statistics for 2025, we're gonna look like a high murder city because of our ratio of murders to residents. We're gonna look, and that's gonna happen.
We are a murder capital of the United States.
Per capita.
We probably are right now.
We, we are. I did the math.
Well, I mean, I, I, um, I think, I understand, you know, what, uh, Councilmember Marsh is talking about, but I do believe that a lot of our residents, they don't wanna go to links, they don't wanna, I mean, there is no, I mean, some people, I think a QR code is easier, but they don't have a QR code for, for something like that. You actually have to type it in to a computer, uh, to do that, um, from, from what you read on the blue newsletter. It's not, and, and our newsletter is not online, so people can't just click the, go online and find the blue newsletter and click the link. So it's really not easy to do that. They really look forward to seeing, oh, are there any crimes enrolling?
They like the blue newsletter a lot.
All right, so let's, we, we can move on, 'cause the fact that you said we can't make a QR code go to a webpage, says if you don't understand that, then no one understands that, so we can just leave it how it is, and we'll, we'll go forward.
Okay.
Because you guys are against it, and I'm, the fact that people perceive, have we ever, have we even reported the crime yet?
No.
No, right? And so it took a little while to explain to everybody that it has nothing to do with us. I mean, like, Jim, I got carpet bombed by people, and it is, it's what it is. So I, I don't disagree with you.
And that's what we're getting, let alone what staff is getting.
I understand, but they'll, they'll go away until we have another double homicide.
True, true.
Triple. Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna top it.
Oh, yeah, double.
Double homicide, so I'm sorry. Okay.
And then I don't know, I mean, as far as that goes, I think it probably, to put QR codes, they have to be a certain, I mean, I, I don't know how easy that is to do it for every single piece of information.
We, we have been adding QR codes for about two years, um, as, as well as, um...
Staff also...
...tries to create what is called short codes. So sometimes those URLs can be excessively long.
Waste a lot of time.
And, and we just create a short code so that it's very easy for somebody to type in, and it corresponds to the QR code. And if you looked at the last newsletter, you will see that the, um, the LA SD's, uh, um, transparency link was, uh, supplied as a short code and as a QR code. Um...
Well, I think if people just understand that, uh, we're repeating information, that's it.
Okay, we're, we're moving on. Okay.
Not interested in your public comment.
Oh, we're gonna open public comment. Melissa, would you like to have a public comment?
Let's see.
Okay.
Melissa McNabb, 11 Quail Ridge Road South. Um, thank you for considering this. I think it's a very important topic. Communication between the city and residents is top of mind in me, for me, frequently, being president of the women's club. Um, several of you may know that I try to share a lot of the information that, um, is involved with the city council meetings, as well as the HOA, um, with my members, and oftentimes there are lengthy discussions, questions, frustration, things like that. So, uh, I think the blue newsletter is, is a wonderful tool. I support it 100%. Um, I also wanted to address, um, some of the comments that were made about, uh, the data being available. Um, I have been, uh, sitting in on some of the Peninsula Public Safety Council meetings, where the fire department was publicizing, the, publicizing the data, and those meetings, uh, from my experience, are not well-publicized to the community. Uh, residents are not invited, quote-unquote, to participate, um, which I would like to see that, because, again, in my mind, the data is very important. So, um, I would suggest that the blue newsletter is a perfect way to reach out and to share some of this, um, what could be important data to residents. Also, the sheer fact that you're getting bombarded with phone calls also means that the residents are looking to the city council, and possibly the blue newsletter or the city, to provide them this information, right? Not some link or something like that where it's hard to find. Also, um, uh, the technology is frustrating for a lot of my, uh, women's club members, a lot of my neighbors. They're not savvy, and they're intimidated, and they will not go find this stuff. So, um, I would like to, uh, support you guys 100% in keeping the blues newsletter as a very good conduit and vehicle to communicate some of these important things that are going on in the community to our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Then I'm gonna close the public comment. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Close the public comment.
Before you vote, I was never saying that the blue newsletter was not a good way to communicate things. It's just that, that one topic. So let's vote.
Okay. All right, uh, matters from staff? Receive and file the code complaint, right?
Receiving file?
Yes.
Do you, we're gonna give any sort of update, or we just wanna make a motion?
No, no, no.
You can go.
I, I read it.
Yeah. Was it a surprise that was on?
Nope. Moving on. To, uh, receive, um, this is to receive and file the code compliance for the report for the third quarter of 2025. Um, this report is updated on code patients that are occurring ahead of her, which is month of July 1 through September 3.
Even on, um, as you know, in May, the city council authorized the, um, authorized me to fill a full-time code compliance officer, planning technician position. The purpose of creating this position was to allow a, um, staff member to be fully available and, um, here on city property during operating hours, um, fulfilling the role that we initially, we contracted out with for relief code enforcement. That code enforcement officer would be here anywhere between six to eight hours throughout a week, um, limiting the amount of time, um, he had to go and visit these cases, review them, but also the turnaround in getting these process, uh, these cases processed and, uh, before staff and/or the city council. Having our new code compliance officer, planning technician position available, already filled, um, he will meet you soon, hopefully in the coming meetings. Um, there has been a quicker turnaround on addressing cases that have been longstanding and open. Some of these cases have been either related to having unpermitted construction, um, activity. However, because we have a planning technician, this individual can go out there and speak to them about the type of permits that are required in order for them to be able to have their construction site within, um, the, the community code and other permitting requirements. So this evening, um, you all see, as a result of having this individual, working closely with the individual who has left, the code, the contract person, um, we currently have, um, a total of six cases, uh, I'm sorry, I misspoke, um... Sorry, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, three cases that the code and compliance officer is currently managing. Um, of these cases, it also includes cases that are currently being reviewed by the city attorney's office. Uh, cases that are at the city attorney's office are currently being drafted and reported out so that we can bring it before the city council as a public hearing. That now, uh, increases total cases that the code compliance officer is reviewing as six, um, bringing the total active cases of nine. It is also important to note that before you, in the attached documents, um, we have listed the case number, case date, main status, address violation, and description and case statuses. What we did include was a brief, um, language that explains what each case is for, and how, and where we are in the actual process. I know one popular one that keeps coming up, which is currently still under the city attorney review, is 79 Eastfield Drive. As you understand, this is currently under receivership, and the last time I reported this out to the city council, they found some asbestos on the property, which requires a special level of maintenance and having the right crews out there to clear that out. So at this time, that's what they're currently working on. You may see some trucks out there, and the purpose is to ensure that they can remove all the debris in a way that is not going to contaminate the surrounding city. So this property, again, is still being under receivership, and will continue to bring quarterly updates, um, when this is brought up before the city council. And, Mr. Mayor, a member of city council, that ends my presentation. However, I am available for questions on any specific items that you may have.
Do they have a timeline on 77 or 79?
79, I think.
When they'll be complete? No, I do not have that.
Okay, that's awesome.
So I have a question on the case dates. I don't know the exact number on Saddleback, but it's the unpermitted construction. I think that should be 2014 or 2012. Um, and I don't know if it's 11 or 6. I, I think that it's interesting that we're going after, someone's got a porta potty out somewhere on Six Mile Back, and we haven't done anything about that guy constructing that garage and promising he would clean the barn and paint the barn and the stow, and the, and the fences and all the trash. Um, and, and I don't see something from 2012 or 2014. I see 2025, and that's not the right number. We've all went out and did a site visit many, many years ago.
Right around the...
Yeah, I can't remember what address, yeah.
The one just down the street, like 6 or 8 or something like that.
And, and certainly, he hasn't taken anything down. He hasn't applied for permits. He hasn't finished it, and he hasn't done what he promised he'd do on painting his barn or fixing his fences.
And it's not mentioned here, is it?
So they...
Unless it's 11, I don't know exactly what number it is. It might be 11, or it might be 6. I don't know what number it is.
So I will go back to look at those cases. If they're not listed here, it's because at some point they were closed.
No, it was never closed.
And this item here, the portable toilet, that was reported on August 21st.
Yeah.
So I, I'll go back and we'll look...
A little like a porta potty that someone got out, and they haven't, you know, they gotta get rid of it. We haven't gone over an illegal garage and a disastrous barn and fence that's been going for all these years.
We'll go back to those.
I don't know why, where are our priorities?
Okay, we'll look at those cases.
And they, they finally did resolve the garage, but then there was all this other crap that was wrapped around.
Garage, they resolved the trash. He never resolved the garage. He resolved the trash.
And that's, that's 6 Saddleback.
Oh, is that 6? So now he's got a porta potty. So why, instead of his porta potty, why don't we go by his illegal construction?
I'll go back and we'll look at those cases and see whether they were closed out.
No, it's, it's still on the list, but we're now, we're just talking about the porta potty, because I think before we were complaining about his trash was the case.
Before that, we complained about him building a, um, a garage right next to the house with no permits and no, not up to codes, and just him and his guy doing it on weekends.
Okay, we'll go back to those. Okay?
Okay.
And I have a question, and for the city attorney or for the city manager. Since we are getting several that are being referred to the city attorney's office, and we incur fees for those, do we have an ability to assess the people for the cost we're incurring for that? Or is that part of what's, that, that's just what we eat because that's the process?
I'd have to take a look at the code. Um, some cities allow for, um, for cost recovery. I'm, I'm, I'm specifically, I'm not sure, um, but we, we can take a look, and if, if it's something that we can recover, I'm sure we will.
That's a great point for later. Some of these, we should make it so we can recover costs. That's a great point. Thank you.
And if not, then we have to submit a amendment to the ordinance to provide for that.
We should do. One of these go on and on and on.
No, true, 'cause some of them have been...
2014, 2012.
Enduring.
Mm-hmm.
Every once in a while, I get some wood on the wall. It's, it's good.
Still, you're gonna touch the newsletter? Come on. And have a link to something? Are you kidding me?
And I, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go for it.
Would you like to make a motion to receive and file?
I'm so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Literally, this shortest meeting in the world, train wrecked by me. Apologize. Um, do we have a recess to close session?
Uh, not tonight, no.
All right, then, um, that's it, right? Like to adjourn this meeting?